All right, all right, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council of February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three to order. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Eight I, or, I'm sorry, eight present.
Thank you. All right, moving on to number, or letter B, Pledge of Allegiance. Can I have Mr. Shadow Gentry lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to number C, or letter C, approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Moved by Alderman in favor, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Any questions or comments or changes? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I?
All right, the agenda has been approved. Moving on to number, letter D, presentations. We have none. Letter E, public participation, we have none, except Duane, I know you're gonna wanna talk when we get to Agenda Item M1, I think it is. Moving on to appointments, we have none. Item G, approval of the minutes, minutes of the regular city council meeting of January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I?
All right, the minutes have been approved. Agenda Item H, consent agenda. Number one, accounts payable and payroll through February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three in the amount of three million, one hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-four cents. Number two, investment and bank balance summary through December, two thousand and twenty-two. Number three, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through December, two thousand and twenty-two. And number four, joint review board meeting minutes of October twenty-second meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any questions or comments on those? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I?
All right, the consent agenda has been approved. Agenda Item I, public hearings, we have none, which brings us to Agenda Item J. Man, that was like in two minutes and we're at J. Considerations. Number one, consideration of a status report on the expanded school resource officer program. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm pleased to say that we have not only some detailed background information for you, but we also have some subject matter experts, say that quickly, in the room tonight. I'll introduce some of them now and then some as we go through this presentation. First of all, our SROs who were able to make it tonight, there are three, as you can see in the back of the room. They're all anxious to speak. No, they're not. Ally Remness, Chris Sullivan, and Danielle Sorensen, thank you for being here tonight. Two other SROs, Anthony Densberger and Joseph Gordon, were not able to attend tonight, but we also have Commander Steve Lakis and, of course, Chief Byrd here, who will also participate as needed in the presentation of the city's side of the heightened security that has been brought to our school year in term. Also, Kyle Girdes, I will introduce him as we get to the second half of this presentation, and Jose Jaquez, who is the district security manager, who is also here. So I'm gonna make my comments brief. The background that you have in front of you and that was available online to our residents, I think speaks in some detail to the point that the council was looking for. Where do we stand? And how do we look compared to the fall term? So we were comparing the fall term of twenty-two with the fall term of twenty-one, or school year twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three. So we've got about six months to compare in a strict comparison, and we'll be talking a little bit later about how we might be able to report on a full school year as we are able. So it was back in the end of June when the council and the school district agreed on an intergovernmental agreement, as you know, and that pertained to school resource officers, and a number of things happened in that agreement. We went from three SROs to a contingent of five SROs. We now have two SROs in the high school on a regular basis, one in each middle school, and one SRO for our six elementary schools that are within the DeKalb corporate limits. A couple of other things were important to both parties. The district, as in the previous IGA, is reimbursing the city in an amount equal to seventy-five percent of the total cost of each SRO. That includes base salary, benefits, overtime pay, et cetera. And seventy-five percent because during the summer months there, the SROs are available for other duties and at other times during the year as well. District also reimburses us for a portion of the cost of the acquisition of two additional police vehicles that were necessary as part of this package. A couple of other non-economic terms are really important to this council and to the district as well, and that was that by the beginning of the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three school year, that all parents or guardians of the students who would be attending our District 428 at all levels would be obliged to read and study a parent's study, student handbook, and also to sign off that they had received the student code of conduct. And that also applies to persons who maybe weren't on hand just as the school year started, but had come and gone during the school year. A couple of other things that's of note, and we can touch on these in more detail if you want later on, but one question has been of interest here locally and also around the country, and that is what, how are ordinance violations and citations rendered to the student or the parents, and where does that take place? Now, under Illinois state law, the citations are not to be delivered in effect in the school buildings, on school grounds, but what we typically do is to arrange for an opportunity to meet with the parent or guardian off the premises and discuss what may have led to the violation and deliberate violation, and there may be another process that follows that.
Bill, real quick, what happens if we can't coordinate with the parent or guardian to issue the citation?
How about if we hold that?
You got it.
Because we're gonna have other questions too.
Yep.
But that's a good question. Okay. And that may very well occur. So, oh, and Cheese is here. I'm sorry. Officer Densberger is here. Good to see you. So I provided you a table. I am very grateful to our police department and also to the district for helping to provide this data, but there is a comparison by individual activity that may have been the focus of a police intervention in two thousand and twenty-one versus the same activity in two thousand and twenty-two. And as you peruse that, you could see a number were about the same. A number went up and a number went down. Overall, there were thirteen, eighteen more violations that were cited. In talking with our SROs and also the school officials, with this list, as it's broken down, part of that increase can be attributed to the fact that we're more engaged, we're working closer with the school personnel, and the code of conduct is in place, and people are being held accountable to that. The Board of Education data, or the data that was presented by school staff to the Board of Education recently, was called together by Kyle Girdes, who's the district director of Student Services, and Kyle is in the audience tonight, and I've asked him, as the expert, to walk you through that information briefly, and then I will dish to Chief Byrd to see if he has anything to add, and then we can open this up to some questions and answers.
Good evening. As I was introduced, my name's Kyle Girdes. I'm the director of Student Services, and I have the privilege to represent our DeKalb School District tonight. Just wanted to kinda hit some highlights and some of the data that has been provided to you. What we pulled together is really looking at our student discipline data, looking at the number of physical altercations that we had from the two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two school year, from the very beginning of the school year, which was in August, through winter break, and then we compared that to this current school year, August twenty-two to December of twenty-two. And really, what we're seeing is, across the board, we are seeing a higher number of documented physical altercations and then other incidents that we would term aggressive behavior. A little caveat with that, the definition of aggressive could range from kindergarteners standing in line, not being able to keep their hands to themselves, pushing, kicking, to something that would be a little bit more serious, which would be a physical altercation or a fight between students. And so there's a wide range in what that looks like, and in order to kinda rise to the level of this data set, what needs to happen is it needs to exceed what a teacher or a staff member would be able to handle on their own and require administrative support, and that we call that, excuse me, an office discipline referral. Office discipline referrals can result in a lot of different actions, ranging from a conversation with the student to exclusionary discipline, which could look at suspension and then ultimately a referral for expulsion. So a really wide range there. As a district, what we're invested in is restorative practices, and so regardless of what the consequence would be as determined by our student code of conduct, our goal would be to hold a student accountable for their behavior, but also engage them in a restorative prac, process that allows them to engage back into the school community, classroom community with success, so they don't repeat that same incident in the future. It is our first year of implementing the student code of conduct, so we're halfway through the year. Research would say that it's not atypical to see an increase in the number of office discipline referrals related to that code of conduct for a few things. I think primarily what we're looking at is there's a focus on implementing this code of conduct from our administrators and from our staff. And so what that means is, I'm not saying we weren't necessarily looking for behaviors and having a process to respond to those, but there's a little bit more of a targeted focus on it this year, and we do contribute, some of our numbers being up to that. It'll be very interesting as we go into next school year, and where we have a baseline number to look at. We have our first year of implementation, and then as we get into maybe this time next year, to look at, how is the needle moved as we've, as a district, learned how to implement our code of conduct, worked through some kinks. Anecdotally, I can tell you I get fewer calls for consultation at this point in the year than I did in August and September from our building administrators, and that's encouraged to talk through some of the more complicated situations, but they are, through training, through professional learning communities, where we discuss various scenarios, getting a better grasp of how to implement it themselves. And so although our data suggests an increase in behavior that results in what we would term aggressive or kinda physically aggressive, I caution us to say that necessarily our students are engaging in more of those things. That certainly is possible, but it could also be that we're looking at, with a little bit hard, like a tighter focus on addressing those things, so we can get those students through the process of that restorative process, and ultimately, hopefully not a reoccurring event. Questions?
Do you have anything else you wanna add, Kyle?
I think that kinda hits the high-level overview, but I am happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Maybe we'll just get through the, just a couple more pieces of the presentation.
Sure.
I wanna say, and I should've said at the top, so our five SROs who work with Kyle and members of the staff and, of course, the teachers at the District 428 locations are all well-suited for what they do, our SROs. They're outstanding sworn officers, their parents. Every, each of them was chosen because of the qualities of empathy and compassion, but also their alertness, their ability to listen and to discern what the roots of a particular incident may be, and to work with the parents and staff or whoever the principal parties are to find some resolution, and restoration is the word. So very proud of them and what they've been able to do, just in the time that they've been in the schools, and particularly this, now that we have expanded contingent and what they've been able to do since August. So, Chief, do you have anything you wanna add?
Good evening. So first of all, I want to go back in time a little bit. I know the mayor, myself, city manager, really fought hard to add additional SROs, and I think it was, it was a long fight, but it was needed. And I wanna thank the city council for helping us and improving what we really thought was very important. Someone asked me the other day, like, you know, how did you know that this situation had kinda turned? And I still remember when Officer Sullivan came in my office, and he flopped in the chair, and he looked like he was beat down. And that's all I needed to see, to know that something had to be done, and we circled the wagons, and like I said, I wanna thank city council for your approval with this, because it was extremely important. But what I will say is that, and the reason why I brought the officers, and I'm not gonna speak long, because sure, I champion their cause, so does Commander Lakis. He champions their cause every day. But I think it's important that we hear their testimony of what they do every day. These are some of the most versatile officers you're gonna see. I mean, their day is just a roller coaster. You know, you, you know, they're dealing with a child with a runny nose, they're, and now they have a fight in, you know, in the lunchroom, and then they have to go back and do, and pass out candy. A lot of different things are going on. They're life coaches. But they also, like I said, we can never forget that their job is to protect those students, the faculty, from outside threats, and that's what they do every day. But then all of a sudden, they have to play life coach, and they have to, you know, have to deal with someone who got a kid who got hurt or who needs a Band-Aid. So this is how versatile that they have to be. And I'm so happy for the five that we do have, because we really vetted them, and they are, they are the best at this job that we have right now. Now, that's not to say that I could go right now and go into PD and find another officer who could do what they can do. I know I can do that, but these officers are just well-trained. The empathy they have for children, most of them are parents themselves, so I think that's why they have a real good understanding of how to deal with children. When it comes to enforcement, I just wanna be, this, I have to say this because I think it's important that everyone knows. We just want compliance at the end of the day. That's all we want. I know a lot of people say, well, you know, having SROs in the schools is a, is a prison pipeline. I disagree with that totally, especially when you vet your officers and have the right people in place, and we have that in the city of DeKalb, at the DeKalb Police Department. These officers are just trying to get compliance. Most of the time, we would prefer that the school district handle most of the discipline administratively. That way, we can walk the other way, because we really, those officers are really, their number one goal is to keep everyone safe from external threats, not internal, but external. So at the end of the day, every now and then, these situations occur, where, of course, we have fights in school. We all went through the high school system, all of us, you know, we've all had fights at some point, or been a part of it or saw it in our school system. And to have officers like we do behind me, and like I said, I am just so proud of all the officers here, and then Officer Gordon, who is not in attendance. They do amazing job for them. But I'm gonna be quiet, because at the end of the day, I wanna bring up Officer Sullivan, if that's okay, Mr. Nicholas.
Yeah.
Okay. So as much as he's gonna-
If it's okay with Officer Sullivan.
That's all right, he's coming. He's prepared. So I wanna give him the opportunity just to give his testimony, because I think it's more important that you hear from one of our officers who handles these jobs every day. All right, Officer Sullivan?
Being in a high school of two thousand teenagers, I would think we're gonna be easy.
All right. So let me start off with, like, I am not a public speaker, so I have something prepared, okay? All right. Approximately a year ago, a request for more resource officers was made from the DeKalb Police Department for the school district. Eventually, it was determined to add two SROs with an option for a third at a later time. This year, in addition to the added SROs, the school district has made some changes, noting that issues were going on that could not just be policed out of. The district came up with code of conduct and made alterations to the student and parent handbook, outlining the expectations of both students and parents. They've also hired more security positions to help with student management. We interact with the building-level administration on a daily basis regarding issues that occurred or trying to find ways to keep issues from occurring. With expectations being known, consequences for not meeting those expectations being issued, the resource officers are able to focus more on, focus more attention on other aspects of our job, which include teaching, mentoring, and building relationships with students, parents, and staff. The building of relationships between the SROs and students and staff does not go unnoticed. On a routine basis, I always get asked, do you know Officer Gordon? Do you know Officer Ally? Do you know Officer Cheese? Do you know Officer Sorensen? We cannot say that there are no issues happening in school this year, but we are working along with the school district on a daily basis to improve conditions for safety and learning. Everything's a work in progress, but it seems like we're in a better place now than we were last year.
Thank you.
Direct question for you, Officer Sullivan. You've been there a while now.
Five years.
So you know what it was like before, you're experiencing it now. I trust and respect your opinion immensely.
Thank you.
I mean, you made a comment that it seems like, but what's your gut? Last year compared to this year?
This year is-
And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but-
This year, I know on the numbers that Kyle was talking about, it looks like there's more stuff. This year has been better than last year.
Okay. That means a lot. Cool.
Can I ask?
Yes.
Do you think that's because of just more SROs, or that the whole program of having this code of conduct and everything?
I think everything's made, added to that being the outcome.
Okay.
On my level, I mean, with another, with Joe up there with me, you know, the work level is cut down, but then we're able to do those other positive interactions with everybody.
You're referring to Jose Jaquez? You said Joe.
Joe Gordon.
Oh, Joe Gordon, okay.
Yeah. He's up at the high school with me.
Yes, Carolyn?
So I have four questions.
Ooh.
And I don't, so I wanna tell you that upfront, so you don't feel overwhelmed by them. I don't want anyone to feel like I'm grilling anybody. I'm genuinely curious and wanna learn more. So first, as I was, you know, reviewing the whole list of everything, I was looking at, you know, I was like, oh gee, what are the definitions of everything? So I'm gonna ask you one question, just to define two different things, and sort of give me an example of what one looks like versus the other. Is that okay?
Okay.
Okay, so what does, what's an example of domestic trouble slash domestic battery versus battery simple?
So a domestic is gonna be if it's a boyfriend, girlfriend, brother, sister, something like that. A simple battery would be two, just two random kids that are in the school or two random people that they get into a fight.
Fascinating. Okay. Next question. Can you walk me through what the subsequent process looks like when you encounter a situation like this? And, yeah, what's the path?
Which situation?
Like, say, say you find a, you know, let's say, simple battery. You have that situation. Say that, you know, you're gonna write the child up, or it's going to move forward toward an ordinance violation or a citation delivered. What does that process look like?
So we wait for, we usually wait for the parents to get there. We talk with the parents on the phone, let them know what has happened. We explain everything to them over the phone or in person, if they're able to come up to the school. We explain everything to the student that was involved, and then there's typically what happens is there could be community service hours that are assigned to somebody rather than there being any other type of fee or anything like that.
Okay. And so what would be the difference between an ordinance viol, and so, well, maybe explain to me the difference between an ordinance violation versus a citation? What's the difference of that? Is there any difference, or is it?
So our ordinance violations, they, they look like a traffic ticket, so it is a citation.
Okay. Okay, so it's one and the same. So it's like a traffic ticket. Okay, and then?
They look like that, yeah.
And so what would the process be that results in an outcome that doesn't result in an ordinance violation? So what would that look like?
So, I mean, every, every single situation is its own thing, right? If these, if the kids have never been in trouble for anything before, or if they're, like, the way that the school may look at it is, if there's two kids that are pushing each other, that's the physical, physical aggression. Okay? There's a difference in my eyes between, you know, shoving each other back and forth and then walking away, or throwing somebody on the ground and throwing punches down on them.
Right. Okay. Okay. All right, so those was, that was two questions.
Oh, okay. So one of the other things that we have the ability to do too is, there's a program that is run through the county called ERAB, it's Early Risk Assessment Project, where basically there are a couple different agencies here in town that they do, they offer like counseling, and if a, if a juvenile is in trouble or gets in trouble for something they have, depending on if they have a long history of being in trouble or not, they could be eligible for that program. And then that's another way that it's not an ordinance violation. It doesn't give them a criminal record, it doesn't do anything like that, but it gives them some of the help or support that they might need.
How do parents typically respond? Are they receptive when you connect with them? How are they?
That is also gonna be individualized.
Case by case.
Some, some parents always feel like, you know, their child could do no wrong. Others realize that their child may have made a mistake, and that's what we look at this as, and that's why there is that restorative piece to try to get past that mistake.
Okay, and this is my last question.
That's more than four.
So you mentioned permanent record and such, so when they get one of these ordinance violations, where is that recorded? And is it always recorded?
The, so the city ordinance is recorded within our police department, so it's only the city that knows. It does not give a criminal record or anything like that. It's just within the city.
Because they're juveniles.
Correct.
Right. Which has been the case.
Well, even, even if, if an adult was charged with a city ordinance thing, it stays in the city. But, yeah, but when a juvenile, when they turn eighteen, everything goes away anyway.
And an ordinance violation is they broke the law of the city of DeKalb?
Correct.
Right.
Thank you, Officer Sullivan. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Yes, Alderman Smith?
I can't call you Officer Sullivan, so, oh, we, just to clarify, some of the more serious ones, though, are criminal offenses that are outside of, let's say, an arson. That rises the level.
That would be a state charge.
So everybody understands that those become the state's attorney, a basically a criminal, not an ordinance offense.
Correct.
Right. That's all. I just wanna make sure we were, everything like an arson is a very serious offense. It's not an ordinance violation. That's a criminal offense brought by the state's attorney's office.
Correct.
Weapons violation.
Weapons violations, correct.
Yes.
Thank you. That's really all I have, oh, yeah.
City manager, just before we continue with questions, did you have anyone else that was gonna present, or is this the time for questions?
JJ, do you wanna say anything?
All right.
So before I, so, great job, Officer Sullivan. So I do wanna say just a couple more things that we also have been sought out by state legislators to talk about SROs as well, so that's why I know our program is strong, because they actually come to us and ask us how we do it here at the city of DeKalb. I think that it should serve as a pat on the back for every one of these officers standing behind me. And it was a great question, Mayor, in regard to statistical data, because sometimes the hard, you look at the hard numbers, I know we all like numbers, and it, and believe me, it can tell the tale sometimes. But we can't forget about perception as well. And I had a, one of the teachers, I was at an event at DeKalb High School, and she just said, Chief, thank you. It feels so much better here. So although the data might, you know, you might look at the hard numbers, and you might say, well, we have more arrests, but she feels safer. And I think that's one of the biggest parts of this as well, that to have a teacher come up and say, I feel safer, I think is just as important as the hard data. So I just don't wanna lose sight of that as well. And I thank you all for our time. Thank you.
Real quick, though, before we get into more questions, Mr. Jaquez, I would like you to come to the podium. Real quick though, before we get into more questions, Mr. Jaquez, I would like you to come to the podium. If you could, for our benefit, since we've talked about increased SROs that, um, have been in this school year, can you tell us a little bit about where security was, uh, last school year compared to where it is this year? And maybe anything of note that you've done with your security personnel that have helped create a more safer environment for our kids and teachers?
First off, Officer Sullivan mentioned that we raised a number of security assistants. Uh, we added three at the high school, uh, two more at Huntley and one more at Rosette. And the, the big difference that we need to understand between our security assistants and our, our school resource officers is our security assistants are essentially the student, um, behavior management during passing periods, during before and after. And if you add it up, it's a, it's a, it's a period. It's an entire class period that our security assistants are the people that are managing 2,000 students. And it's a matter of nine people. So it's, it's quite a challenge for them and that's what their job is, is get the, get the people a class. Not having them doing whatever they're going to be doing in the bathroom other than going to the bathroom. And part of the training, we're having de-escalation training that they, that they all had to go through. Alice training, which is the intruder training, which also involves SROs. Uh, and then they have CPI, which is again, another de-escalation training with a little bit of, um, if necessary, physical control, but we hope we never get there. But they're all getting trained in that, um, so that they are better able to handle student issues that aren't to the level of, uh, the school resource officers. They work with them. I'm pretty sure that Hoey's probably interacted with out every one of our, um, school resource, or excuse me, every one of our security assistants in the high school and as well as, um, Officer Densberger, Cheese, uh, with the assistants in the middle school. That's, uh, the, the sum, the summary of, of what our security assistants, um, is right there. One thing I did want to mention, now that you got me up here, uh, is the school, the difference in the school resource officer, the reaction to the school resource officers between August and now is very noticeable. Not sure Officer Densberger was like really understood when he walked into Rosette. You know, here's this redheaded bearded guy coming in and he's, he's giving us candy, he's doing this and that. And it took him a while to figure out, you know, where his line was, what he was going to do, what he wasn't going to do with the students. They thought he was just a happy guy that was going to give them candy. And now the students realizes that, wait a minute, he's not giving me candy anymore. And Cheese, sorry to give away your secrets, he pays attention to whether they're behaving or not and he'll, he'll call them on it. And, and they get it. And the same thing at the high school. We have people who I would never think would come up and ask me about the school resource officers or ask me, well, where's, you know, where's Gordon? You know, where's Sullivan? They, and not to try to see if they can sneak something away. They want to see them. They want to talk to them. They want to just share the same spaces them. So it's, it's noticeable that, that they're there and they're appreciated by staff and students.
Awesome. Thank you. Questions?
I'm going to throw this out here. They have a Facebook page, SRO page, and I, Alley, do you handle it?
Yes.
Yeah. I, I would urge-
Will do.
Yeah, I was going to say, please follow. There's a lot of great information out there. A lot of parents, I, I see them joining it and paying attention. I will say they're better at that than volleyball, but we'll leave that. But they did, I seriously, take the time to follow them. You'll really understand what they do on a day-to-day basis and the comments that are there are a lot more than we can ever say here, so.
Alderman Morris?
Just one last question for clarification. I guess this is probably at city level. So we said we would add three. Did we add all three? We just added two?
We added two.
Two.
Okay. And so are we definitely going to add the next one in the coming future?
We have five now and, and we started with three, so we added two.
And it was a district decision if they wanted to go with three. Yep.
Oh, I see. You're going back to like the early discussion. There was talk about three and we added two. No, that, it's, two is what was in the IGA.
And we're done?
Well, no, there's an option for a third and it is up to the district if they want to pursue the conversation about adding a third.
Okay.
Most likely we're here. Yeah, order reduced, yeah, exactly. Yeah, city attorney?
Mayor, you had a, a question earlier about if the parents are not there for when there is an ordinance violation and, and, you know, the SRO asks the parents to come in and, and how do we communicate that SRO, uh, or that citation at the ordinance level? And, and our, our municipal code allows us to mail in a citation. So we would get, get the address of that student and mail it in. And hopefully that would solicit a response if they were unwilling to meet with the SRO at the school.
Gotcha. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Morris?
How often does the mail thing happen? No?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I haven't had to do it.
Okay. Good to know.
Zero.
Awesome.
Yes, city manager?
Mayor, just say, uh, just at least to cap the staff piece of this, uh, well, first to say thank you to all the people who participated tonight, but, uh, probably early summer, uh, as soon as we can gather information, we'll have a school year to compare against the previous school year. And that will, we'll have another, uh, at your pleasure, another opportunity to look at progress we've made, hopefully progress we made.
Any other comments, questions? Yes, Alderman Perkins?
I just want to thank you folks for your effort. I mean, it's, it's great to come out and, and hear this and provide some texture, particularly when the data suggests something else. You know, because that gut reaction that it is making a difference, it is, it is getting better. I think that's really what everyone's looking for is to, the needle to go the right direction. So thank you all for your efforts. Much appreciated.
And no, it's a, definitely a team effort. I mean, we don't see, it's your responsibility for making sure our schools are safe. Counsel, we've done and gone to great lengths in the community to make sure that when those kiddos leave the school and they go home, that they go home to the safest, most calm environment possible. Because I cannot expect someone to go through, uh, when they go to Triffrat a couple of years ago and the environment some of those kids had to deal with on a day-to-day basis that they were supposed to come to school and be normal. I think that was an unrealistic expectation. So realize we are not leaning on you to solve this and we're not leaning on the district to solve this. This is a community issue and all of us in the community need to take responsibility to make sure our kids are safe in school and outside of school. And council here takes that very seriously. So as Alderman Perkins said, appreciate your effort, but I also want to make sure you know we're, we're leaning in hard on this one as well. And I really do look forward to this summer and then in the fall and repeat presentations to see if, not only do we have the perception of, of Officer Sullivan, but we also have the data backing up that what this team effort's doing is making an impact for our kids. So, uh, again, thank you for coming out tonight and thanks for everything.
Thank you all.
Alderman Morris?
And I just want to sincerely thank you all for what you do and your investment in our children. Because at the end of the day, this is, along with the teachers, to me, this is the most important thing for our community, ensuring that our kids come home safe. I've got two kids at the high school. I've got two in elementary school. And I want to see that they come home safe and I don't want anything to go wrong. So thank you so much for taking care of them like your own.
All right, hearing no other comments or questions, uh, you all do not have to stay. Uh, feel free to leave. You're more than welcome to attend the entire meeting if you want. It's riveting, but thanks again. All right, moving on to number two, consideration of the impact of video gaming establishments in the city of DeKalb. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Another good consideration and, uh, I want to thank, uh, especially Ruth Scott for pulling together a lot of the data. She's involved in the day-to-day, year, year on, year, year in and year out, um, compilation of the records regarding our, our video gaming terminals. So, uh, there's again, quite a bit of information here by, by way of background. Couple of different categories of, uh, uh, terminals and what applies to them. You're all aware, of course, of, of the video gaming establishments and according to the council's, uh, prerogative and preference, each one of these establishments is allowed a maximum of six video gaming terminals and there are a maximum of 10 video gaming establishments allowed in this city of DeKalb. But there are also quite a number of video gaming terminals, uh, that are allowed as an accessory use where, um, liquor establishments are concerned. The total number of all, if you add up the, the 60 allowed in the, in the, uh, video gaming establishments and on all others currently is 113 terminals in town. And you can see that in the background. And the actual, uh, revenue that comes from the establishments all taken altogether is also played out for you in the background and also online for people who are interested. When you add the liquor and, uh, terminal license renewal fees that are annual, uh, the renewals are annual, we, we get just under a half a million dollars a year from all, all sources having to deal with these terminals. So, uh, there is more information in your background. There are a few places where the terminals have been authorized and not yet installed for a variety of reasons. There are some considerations that come up, uh, at city hall from time to time where establishments are, uh, wondering, particularly, uh, gas stations and convenience stores or, or food fuel places are wondering, can we have these? And that they're not allowed under our current rules to have that. So tonight's discussion could revolve around a number of things. One is, uh, do you like the setup that we have now with the 10, uh, licensed or allowable, uh, video gaming establishments? I have to remember, VGE, VGT. And, uh, are you looking to restrict or expand the number of supplementary licensed terminals that exist in town? Uh, or the types of locations where they can be found? So I've laid that out for you tonight. The, uh, there, there are other related things that can come up in the conversation as well. Did not, uh, although we did identify the different liquor license categories, uh, we are not tonight here for the purpose of discussing that. That would require a little more background to talk about, uh, the whole liquor code as it may apply. But, uh, tonight we're focusing, at least I was focusing in response to your direction from the last regular meeting on the terminals themselves. So I'll stop there. You've had a chance to look. There's quite a lot of background here. If you happen to answer any questions, I can.
Council? Alderman Morris?
What is the tax rate on, uh, this? So like if we see that, you know, we earned X number of dollars, how much are they earning?
How much are what? How much, how much is it a terminal? So a lot of this has to do with the use. So, uh, uh, the rate is competitive with our peers in comparable cities. So, uh, some are more active than others, obviously, is what you're seeing here. And we played that out. That's why I did the list on, on how many terminals are in each one and, and then, uh, what each one of them is generating. Some are, and some are in and out of, or during COVID. As you look at, we did five-year, uh, analysis and you can see, uh, actually, uh, 2022, we haven't, uh, had the, the full audited amount, but it's probably going to be pretty close to this, was the, by far the, the most, uh, the most earnings reported of any year that we've had terminals.
I, I interpreted the question and if it wasn't that, this is my question. In a dollar, we get how much? The state gets how much? And how much does the proprietor get?
That's a good question.
I, I don't know the exact breakdown.
Okay. Do you know a guess or no?
Yeah, I, I, it's an, yeah.
Oh, Alderman Favor has the answer. Yeah.
I want to say the last time I looked at it, the city takes 5%.
Yeah.
We, we collect five, now the state gets a portion.
I think the state is either 25 or 30.
Yeah. That's my, my understanding.
So then the proprietor gets, well-
Five and 10 is my understanding, but I think, I think five is correct.
And then I guess the proprietor gets a chunk, but the, the person playing also gets a slice of that pie. Yeah.
So that our redistributions come from the state. We also get, we, we can have a license fee on each terminal or terminal operator fee. So, uh, so that is independent of the revenue distribution, which I think was the question, uh, that, that came in. But each, even if no, nobody goes to a gaming facility, for example, uh, they still have to pay the terminal license operator fee to us, uh, for that. And then the distributions come from the state. Uh, you can find, you can go on the state's gaming, uh, the gaming commission website, you can actually find how much each individual terminal is, uh, uh, getting to, what that revenue distribution is, if you wanted to.
And we do not license individual terminals?
Uh, we, we get a terminal operator's fee for each terminal. So in a sense, we, yes, there's a video gaming license and then for each terminal, they have to pay a certain amount. I forget, was it a, is it a thousand or is it, I forget, I, how much each one is?
It's a thousand?
Right, yeah. So if you, you know, for, if you had six terminals, you have $6,000 for, it's $4,000, uh, per year.
Is that one time or?
It's, no, it's each year.
Okay. All right, other questions, comments? Except on Tuesdays.
Yeah, you could increase that amount if you, if you wanted to. That's not a set amount.
So I think it's a perfect time too on comments about, uh, are we happy where we're at? Do we want more? Do we want less? That's part of this discussion too. Alderman Favor?
I'll jump in the fire. So as video gaming establishments go, I'm not in favor of them. I don't think that's been, uh, should come as a surprise to anyone, but, um, when I, when I came onto the council, these were already in our community, but they were primarily, um, accessories to an existing business. And so you could say, wow, somebody's already set roots down in the community. They've got a business that they're running. This is just in addition to that where the video gaming establishments are strictly for the purpose of gaming. And so my feeling are, it was mentioned earlier, so we, I think we tried to hold it at eight, then we had another one that came in, then there was another one that came in. There was a, we had told someone or had given a license to someone, but we'd already promised someone else they would have one. So, um, so I would love to see that as, say, a business either leaves the community, it doesn't happen, you know, they, they close their business or whatever, that license then dissolves and goes away. So we slowly have attrition in the community of video gaming establishments. That's, that would be my vision. On the video gaming terminals as an accessory, um, again, I'm, it's more palatable to, to add it to an existing business. And, and I'll, I'll let you guys work that out going forward.
Alderman Verbic?
Yeah, I agree, Alderman Favor. I don't get it. I don't see the attraction or the draw to video gaming and/or, uh, how it truly benefits the community. But it's those that I serve that are interested. They want to see growth of different gaming places. I've even heard mentioned a, a riverboat on the Kishawaki River. If we could have a, a casino, that would be wonderful, but I can't relate. I, I'm not a gambler, so I don't understand, uh, the whole principle. So I, I think at the end of the day, I completely feel the same as, as Alderman Favor in that I, uh, don't think it's truly the best for our community. I don't believe it's up to me to say what's best for those I serve.
Alderman Larson?
And this is, I agree with both of you. I would love to see the gaming licenses just slowly disappear. And maybe this is, trying out of both sides of my mouth. Now, if a casino wanted to come and have a restaurant and the whole thing, and it's a casino, I'd listen to that, but these little machines with this little piece of, like, police tape that's supposed to make it so it's for 21 and over in every gas station and stuff, I just don't think that's a kind of DeKalb that I want to live in or that I want to support. And so I'm definitely against terminals in a bar that's already 21 and over. I could go there, but gaming just for these terminals, I'm not going to support it. I know people would be like, it's easy money, but, look at that, there's a lot of easy money, but it's still not where I'd want to live. So I agree with both Alderman Verbic and Favor.
Any other questions or comments? For me, you said 137, right?
That's all terminals?
Yes, right. 10 establishments and then-
10, right.
Right, which the establishments have how many?
Six.
Yes.
Per max. Per maximum.
So one hundred and thirty-seven, I'm good. I, personally, I don't want to see another one in this town in any way, shape or form. I figure one hundred and thirty-seven for the population that we have, technically a population that's declining, meaning after this last census, we're serving more per capita than we were before. I in no shape or way, shape or form want to see any more VGTs or VGEs in the community outside of what has already been established and on the books. So that's where I'm on that one. So I'm in agreement with multiple older people here. So I think this is a consideration, hang on, city attorney. This is a consideration. I think the city manager is looking for, do we hold where we're at? And when someone calls City Hall, we say, no. Yes.
So if I could just hone this a little bit. So if we could take one, one piece of this, which is the video gaming establishments separately. So there are ten authorized right now. What I've heard so far, and there may be other opinion, is that as a establishment goes, one of the ten goes out, then we're down to nine, and one of the nine goes out, then we're down to eight. And is that, if that's the arithmetic on that side, that's an easy ordinance to, to...
Okay. Yeah, that's a good point of clarification, since we're looking at making ordinances. So my comment that I made earlier, I stand by. When it comes to the reduction, when that business transitions to a new owner or something, it's very difficult for someone to want to invest in a building and things like that when the sole purpose of it is revenue generation due to video gambling, to not have that asset. And I don't even know if banks would want to fund it if they knew that if that, something happened, the owner went away, they wouldn't be able to get their, their revenue or their, their loan dollars back. I, I can't see that. Now, maybe if one goes bankrupt, I don't know, but I think we're still in the same situation with a lender that they're going to want to reclaim the value of what they loaned for the construction of that property. So for me, I can't see actually reducing them as they change ownership or something happens. I don't think that's feasible. Yes, Alderman Larson.
Without getting too involved, because we have a current one where, that was being sold, and now it's gone quite a while, and they haven't been able to secure the state portion of it, could we have something that if, if you want to sell yours to Joblo? And Joblo has six months to get approved by the state, or a year, whatever. And if they don't get approval, then can we say it goes away? That can we have a time limit that if they don't get approved by the state?
Yeah. Do you want to go away the total number of video games? So right now, we have ten video gaming licenses, and that's capped by, by ordinance. There's a question, which you could legally do, you could, we could amend our ordinance to do what Alderman Favor suggested that we do is that, or, and, you know, and that's a topic of discussion that you could have. Or there's this, you know, the, the question is that when somebody's given a conditional license and they have not satisfied the condition, do we revoke that? But there's still ten out there. So that individual holder, then it would go from nine, and then there'd be an extra license that somebody could get down the road. We could definitely, that, we could do that right now. So for example, for the one that's out there, we could, you know, the, the, there could be a liquor commissioner action to revoke the, that conditional license. And then, you know, there would be that free quote-unquote license that's out there.
I think the question was if the state...
Well, see, I was trying to put you two together.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I agree with you, as people leave the business, then we're down ten, nine, eight. But I can see you with the bank saying, well, the bank's, you know, they're going to want that license back, or, you know, the, the value of it, to, to loan somebody to get into the business. But we have one that can't seem to get into the business because they're not meeting other criteria. So could we get that if you take over somebody's license and you haven't been able to secure all the other things, you lose it and we're down one?
Because, I mean, they have to also, if I recall, to have a video, VGE license, you also have to serve liquor, right? Correct. Which is fascinating, by the way, all of you in the audience, that you have to serve alcohol at a video gaming establishment. So let's use the example maybe of a scenario of they, they got their video gaming license, but they were denied a liquor license through the state because they didn't pass the background check, whatever could happen. I, I was thinking if there's a way to tie it to, if they can't, within a certain period of time, get what they need from the state, then they lose the license and that license is gone forever.
So here's, but getting to your point, Mayor, earlier, so let's, if we were just starting out, there were no video gaming establishments, this would be easier to say. We say, well, some risk, here are the rules, here's your risk. If you can't get the state license within a year, the local conditional license goes away. And so you're done. You maybe didn't proceed to buy the property or whatever your relationship was with the bank and so forth. But right now, we've got ten, really nine plus, but they all have agreements on these properties, whether it's they've owned them, they own them, or they lease them or whatever. So, and somebody had them in some cases before them. So now you've got, got this train of, of financial obligations. So the one that's still hanging out there, let's say it doesn't get it, doesn't come through, and we say, well, okay, too bad, you know, you're going to lose it. Then the person who had that property bought it, maybe arranged to close on a, on a lease or, you know, a rent. Now they're kind of stuck. Of course, they could convert the property to some other use, but we're, we're saying that's what they're going to, you know, in other words, we, we're imposing that particular hardship, not you individually, but that's what the code is going to do. So if you want to go that far, we just have to be mindful of that. There may be some pushback on that, there may be some legal pushback on that, but maybe that's the only way. You can't, there, right now, there isn't going to be a property that has a license currently that isn't going to be in that shape.
So, and I guess to, I guess to summarize it just a tad better is that if, the question is if, yeah, I was going to say, I'm sorry. I was going to say, if, not, not from you, but is the, is the question that, that if a license is revoked, that the total number of video gaming licenses should then go down? Is, was that the, is that the...
Without understanding all the legalese behind that, that I think is the impression, correct? Yeah, if it's revoked.
Yeah, we could do that versus compared to as they just, you know, went out of business or they wanted to retire.
Yep.
You could, you could do that if you wanted to. That total number could go down. You, you, you have the same problem that we were, that, that the city manager was just talking about and that the mayor alluded to.
Not so well.
Generally, yeah. No, 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 but I...
It's really clear to me now.
And it's not, yeah, that's not what I was saying, and I apologize for that, right? But, but that's, I mean, you could definitely do that. The total number could go down based on just pure revocation as compared to abandoning a license or...
So what we could do, because I have a feeling we can really get in the weeds, and I'll get right to you on this, because then I'd want to know, revoke, revoked it, I pulled their liquor license, is that revoked? So we, we need, but we need to figure that out. I think, I think Alderman Larson was more saying at the state level that if they, if there's something that happens and they can't get the license or they don't do the renewal or whatever, then we'll drop down. So I guess, real quick, Alderman Larson, Alderman Larson needs to make a question. I, I can see that, and I'd be definitely supportive of twenty thousand foot view of what we're talking about, that right now. Alderman Morris.
I was just going to say, you know, a different angle to pursue what you're discussing. Your, your general goal could be looking at taxing it more heavily, making higher fees, making it more cost prohibitive, just a different direction.
Yeah, good point. Yes, Alderman Verbic.
To dovetail on that, is there a way to legally attach some type of immediate contribution to our human services funding, for example? So it could be toward gambling addiction or whatever the case may be, but instead of just us raising the fees, could we direct a fee increase to our human resources, or our human services funding?
So right now, we're, we're just talking about the establishments, right? Just, okay. So, and, and thank you for that. We, we could do that. Well, we could just, at the turn of their license, there, it's going to be higher, the renewal is going to be higher, and the renewal increase goes exclusively toward helping us fund our human service budget every, which is two hundred thousand now, and whatever else we get goes toward that. How's, or, you know, whatever, whatever it is, whatever you want. And that's, that could be another action another time. But I could bring back, just to talk about the video gaming establishments and ordinance working with the city attorney that takes a crack at establishing what, what seems to be the consensus here. And you could look at it and say, that's it, or that's not it, and we could have some discussion, or you could throw it out. But I think we have to, we have to wordsmith this so you can react to it. If you're okay with that, that would be the first part of this. The second part, are you okay with that, if we bring that back?
Yeah, I have some comments.
Okay, then I was going to say, the second part of this is a little stickier. We've got a lot of supplemental video gaming terminals, and the mayor's suggestion there was, let's, we could, we could stick with that. There, there is some ebb and flow, you know, there's some, a little more in this establishment. If you were over here, for whatever reason, it's, it stays about the same unless there's another new liquor license. And then, then we get, where terminals are allowed, then you get another three or four, whatever it happens to be. So that's, I don't know, just keeping track of that, that's, that's something, you know, our executive assistant gets one crack at when there's a renewal at the year, but oftentimes these things happen during the year. And then it's usually another establishment that blows a whistle and says, hey, I was just in whatever, and now there are three, or now there are five, or whatever. It's hard for us to track that. We don't go around and do sweeps of those establishments.
Alderman Favor.
So one of the things, you know, obviously, we've, as a council, worked with city staff, we've established some guidelines, which has helped to limit, you know, the explosion that we, we had started to see where some were being built within five hundred feet of another, of another establishment. So we've, we've established some guidelines to help slow, you know, where, where they can go. What I don't want to do is what happened earlier with the liquor license, right? It's kind of like the cab medallions. I don't want to see, I've got a golden ticket, you know, my VGE is going to be worth millions of dollars because they're not having any more in the city of Decalb. So I like the idea of tying it to, like, the state level. It's not, you know, we're not telling businesses, we are, but we're not telling businesses, don't come to Decalb. But in terms of risk and for a bank, you don't buy that business until you, you make an agreement with the person selling that business that you're not buying it until you've got all your ducks in a row. Otherwise, I'm not buying that business, because if I don't get my state license, I'm going to lose.
You would think.
I'm going to lose out of everything. So it, it's not going to be easy, but I think there's, I think there's a way to, certainly the word's going to be out, we're not, we're not receptive to any new establishments at Decalb. In fact, we're looking to amend them in Decalb.
I, I get it. We'll play with that, see what we can do.
So you have what you need?
Yep.
All right. Good.
Yeah.
Yes, Alderman Smith.
Lottery terminals, we don't, those don't fall under an ordinance, do they?
We don't, we don't, we don't authorize lotteries, yeah.
And I mean, like the state lottery.
Oh, you mean like, yeah, the state lottery.
Correct, yeah, yeah, we don't have the authority to regulate it.
The state.
I'll stay out, I'll get back to it.
All right. Moving on to agenda item...
Oh, what do you, Mayor, what do you want to do about the other half of this? And so then we've got all these supplemental...
The VGTs? Oh.
Leave it alone, or, what do you want, what does council want to do?
Well, I want to just cap them. I don't want any more in the community. But we guess, I guess we would have the same conversation, right? What if? Questions, comments for council on that? Yes, Alderman Favor.
So I, I know speaking to a couple of the nonprofits, right, that's some of their, again, that was some of their request or their, their, their need to put these in was, is, you know, their establishments weren't drawing, you know, enough people to their, to keep them in business, and so they felt that they needed the...
What nonprofit are you referring to?
American Legion, the Elks Club, Knights of Columbus, Moose, just, you know, the top four there on the list. I've, I've spoken to a few of them, and that's what they said is, you know, we, we needed these terminals, otherwise we just wouldn't be drawing people in. So when you talk about, the, the same thing is when you talk about raising the fees per terminal, you're going to get a lot of their members, you know, talking about, we're, we're a nonprofit, we're barely making it as it is. So I just something to be...
Sure.
And Mayor, I don't, I don't mean to complicate this anymore, but I think the council also wanted us to, we're going to do tobacco at the next meeting, and then after that, maybe liquor. And maybe wait till do the liquor to reach the final decision on these supplemental, because if, if you're going to cap that, then as you said, you've just, you've changed the value in, in the market of, of those types of licenses, plus the terminals. You know what I mean? Because typically such an establishment will want those terminals. So we, maybe we take them both at the same, or do you want to take them separately? These are the supplemental.
Yeah, because if you cap liquor, you've effectively capped the supplemental video gaming. Now the question is, do you want to lower?
Well, not necessarily, because what if the Elks Club comes and says, we want three more? Right?
Well, you've, in terms of the total number of terminals at that facility?
Because if you're tying to, the conversation you're saying is, if we don't add another liquor license, then we wouldn't be adding any VGTs because the state requires alcohol to be served. But it's still on the table would be what if an establishment wants more?
So what it, that, an establishment that currently has video gaming wants?
And a liquor license, yeah. What if they want to go from three to six?
Oh, okay.
So the liquor, liquor doesn't necessarily end that conversation.
Right, correct.
I think we're kind of in the same boat. Yes, Alderman Morris.
And just to go further with what Alderman Favor was saying, just that we do have quite a few tax dollars that leave our community when people want something that isn't here. So in that vein, we want to keep that in mind as well.
Yeah. For me, I guess when you have one hundred and thirty-seven or something, I think we've covered that, you know? I'm not, I'm not being, I'm not trying to be sarcastic, and I am trying to be sarcastic in that, but not, not with offense. It was just more of a, I really do think, like, okay, we leaned in, we captured a bunch of that revenue, because then you get, so there's two fifty, three fifty, I mean, at what point do we just become the, the city of video gambling?
Right. No, and I was probably leaning more toward the idea of probably attrition isn't, is, is going to be tough and harmful in some businesses.
Yeah.
So just like the nonprofits are trying to make ends meet with them, so are the regular businesses.
My whole goal was to put a moratorium on what's out there, VGEs and VGTs. That's where I wanted to go. I, I appreciate a mechanism to decrease the VGEs potentially, based off of the conversation that we had. For me, the VGTs, I'm fine with, what's there, is there. So, yes, Alderman.
So I'm, I'm fairly comfortable with, with capping things, so to say, but I, but I, the thought of, of attritioning them out, I'm, I'm not quite comfortable with that. You know, and, and I think before we go down that path, it'd be nice to give some of these folks an opportunity to, to speak for themselves, you know, because some of the, some of the money, it really is real with some of these businesses.
Yeah.
And it's, and they've adjusted their business model in a way to, to accommodate this, you know, so, you know, the, the attrition piece just makes me a little uncomfortable. Capping it, I'm comfortable with it, but, you know, without feedback from someone in the community saying, well, we, we really, really need to do something here, you know, I'm not quite comfortable going further.
So the, and I can appreciate that. The attrition piece, though, what we're talking about is that they won't qualify for X, Y, or Z, then, then it, it just goes away. They can't get that. We're not talking about, they can sell the business and sell the license, and the new buyer can apply for the liquor license, or liquor license, the video gaming license at the state, get approval, and the license can transfer to them. So that current business owner still has a viable product that they can sell to the next person. We're just saying, like, let's say the existing owner doesn't pay the state, doesn't do whatever, and now the state has revoked that license, we're just going to go from ten to nine, as opposed to, they went out of business, now we have another liquor license, or a video gaming license for sale.
And, and usually, we can, we can approve or deny those things really anyway.
Yeah.
Right? And we don't really have to take any subsequent action, you know? In this case, with the one that's, we're talking about that's having some difficulty, I think we could at a point say, we're done.
Yeah.
And we don't necessarily have to codify that it's going to go from ten to nine to eight or anything like that.
Did you catch that, city manager? The question would be, every, if, if someone went out of business and we went from ten to nine, let's say, we have an extra, that someone to apply for that has to come before council, has to get our approval. We could... We could deny it and stick at nine.
Right.
Just through our inaction of approval.
You can do that right now.
Yeah, 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 okay. Yeah, that's what clarification I was looking for.
We we might refine that existing ordinance a little bit just to give people pause or call or, you know, or alert, be alert to that fact. So it's not an automatic. It usually comes with a special use, so there there are public opportunities to comment.
Our our ordinance right now, does it does it specify we allow 10 VGEs and 137 VGTs or is VGT not specified?
10 10 VGEs.
Yeah, okay.
Establishments with a maximum of six in each one of those, so that's 60.
Okay.
So the 77 others are supplemental to other uses, other liquor licenses.
So how about how about this to decomplicate things potentially and save a ton of work on that end? Where are we all at with the standpoint of what if we just cap the 10, the 137? Because every new one that may come up because of failure of particular VGE has to come before future councils. They can make the decision at that time, but at least the law of the city of DeKalb is 10 VGEs, 137 VGTs total, and that's it. Yes.
The the VGT thing, I guess I'd be comfortable if you cap it whenever with with all these existing folks and having the ability to go up to six.
Yeah.
Because because there are a handful of them that don't have six.
And why don't they have six?
Well, so in my experience, they don't have six because, you know, they they likely haven't worked with the gaming company for it to make sense. But as their business grows, they may want to add that sixth one. And then we've we've gone through that with the Elks Club, you know, just as as a for example. So capping it because at a point in time, we decided we were concerned with a number, you know, I'm I'm good with capping it, but I think if the math should make sense where they should have the ability to go to six. That would be my thought.
Yeah, I think the easier discussion would be to just on top of that is to cap the number of these accessory liquor licenses, which we could cap at the current number, right?
Hey, before we I don't, before we get into the accessory liquor license piece, I think we can just stick with the conversation.
Well, that's I meant the accessory gaming, I'm sorry. Yeah. For me, you know, the we'll use the Elks Club as an example, is three. So they have three.
We've got five.
Five, okay, five. So you're saying the, and I don't understand the business model, but there's not enough traffic to justify six, let's say, at this point. But you could build traffic based off of those five to cause demand for a sixth.
Correct.
Yeah, and where I stand on this is it's awesome that we got to five and they got to five or three and they got to three. There's gonna be every other bar restaurant going forward that won't have any. So I'm fine just capping the whole thing. What you have is what you have. You already had a an advantage compared to the competitors out there because of the number that an individual location has. So for me, I'd rather just keep it, but that's that's me. How about the rest of you?
I would agree. And actually, I like that idea because it doesn't it doesn't interfere with the business of the the community. But it also imposes our will in a softer way.
Yes, Alderman Morris.
I think the reason that I'm leaning toward Alderman Perkins's suggestion is that when these companies decided or nonprofits decided to take the first step, six was the rule. And so they went, they entered that path with that expectation. And I think it's a little disingenuous of us to change the rules in the middle. I think that's why I'm leaning toward what he's saying.
Yeah, and I would have gone for, boy, this is the opportunity, go with six. Things change. Alderman Larson, did you, I didn't know if I saw your hand.
No.
No?
And and I'm 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 torn because in my heart, I'm with you. We have enough. But I do hear what you're saying that if you've started this thinking, I can go up to six, now we're changing the rules for this dream.
So I look at Lakai, right? Lakai opens up. We say, no, you don't get them. So Lakai has to compete against, we'll say, Elks Club, Hometown, everybody else. What we're saying now is not only do you have to compete against organizations that have video gambling, but as they bring in even more clients because of that, they're gonna be able to add more terminals and bring in even more people, which is gonna make it even tougher for Lakai to make it. And I'm just using Lakai as an example, not not as a.
Here's one that's pretty important to us in the downtown. So McCabe has been shuttered for a long time. There's there's conversation about reopening it as a bar, not as a bar restaurant, but as a bar. And under our code right now, they could get a number of supplemental video gaming terminals. So if we cap the number and nothing changes, nobody wants less, you know, and might want more later on. So then the the petitioner for the license wants also to get three, four, five, six, whatever, video gaming terminal. So we, the implication of that is that we have to just say, no, sorry. You know, since whatever date, we we don't allow that anymore. So so just we just have to be aware. I'm not making that argument. I'm just saying then we'll at the staff level, we'll just we'll just be very firm about that, of course, because that's the law.
And for me, I mean, Lakai opened up, El Jimador opened up El Jimador. They don't have video gambling, right?
They didn't have them at the time.
Right. So there is there is a viable economic model depending on the business that you have and the product that you have and the service that you have to actually have a business where video gambling doesn't define the profitability or the sustainability of the business.
And I think that's the turn. If the community wants to make a live statement, that's the turn. But there's gonna be some point in the sand and then after that, eventually people will know them and that's how it will go. All right.
Alderman Faver? Uh, we're not done.
Just along the lines of, you know, again, limiting the use or whatever. So I was doing the math. I'm trying to figure it out in my brain. The numbers aren't adding up. But when I look at the back, there's 24 establishments, but two of them are closed. So O'Leary's closed and it didn't impact the sale of their building to have another business come in into our community. So the gaming terminals are gone. They're not in our community. So that's okay. And then Twin Taverns, they closed the bar. So it hurts that they closed the bar, but again, those terminals aren't in our community. So the number of machines is have declined. I don't see a, I don't see a problem capping it. If you want to say, you know, I don't know, I I I don't have a problem capping it where they're at right now. I don't know when the last time an accessory added a machine to their property. So I don't know how often it happens. I mean, in the last several years, I don't know that there's been a lot of investment. It does. I I know I know it, um, we've added up, we've added two gradually over the last few years. We added one and and it worked and that the payback was there and added another one. But I think most of most of them, if you look in the data, most of them are at or near that six anyhow.
Yeah, so it's like seven that we're considering.
Is it? Okay, I didn't look at that. Okay.
But I guess I'm still in favor of economic controls rather than capping it. Because I think it, we live in a capitalist society, you know, I I like to have the freedom of choice. When the numbers add up for the business and it makes sense, you you go that route. And I I agree, I'm so torn on this. This is why I'm not really saying much because I I feel absolutely both ways and I hear everything everybody's saying. But I think if you put in an economic barrier to entry, it's a safer barrier to entry where it allows more flexibility and freedom for the individual business owners.
Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Faver.
And to your point, Alderwoman Morris, the the revenue is there from what I'm hearing from all of the owners. So if there are dollars that can be put to good use in our community and we can steer those dollars, I'm not sure about limitations yet because I don't want to limitation, limit the potential of of what those dollars could help in our community.
I have heard over and over again in the community, I don't want to go to the laundromat and see it. I don't want to go to a gas station and see it. I don't, well, no, but but this is the conversation we're having.
You're right.
I mean, if we want to put in economic barriers, well, that means we are getting this question right now. I want it in this establishment, that establishment, that establishment, and they're all unique. Where is the where is the limit on something like that? So that that's where I'm sitting here thinking, we have 137 and actually, if we're dealing with seven and there's like seven terminals left out there, I'm okay then if we just want to cap it at six and be done with it. But I I don't want to see more of these going forward. And then if we add economic impact to it, then what about all those existing establishments that base their economic model off of, I didn't have those and now we're putting all these additional burdens on it, they may not have gone down that path to begin with. So I guess what if we had them just cap 10 VGEs? How many individual businesses, 22?
Here's the thing. So 10 VGEs with six machines each is 60. And the current number of machines at full capacity is 126. So that's why I'm saying the math wasn't working for me. But so there's only 119 total in the community. And to Alderman Perkins's point, he's saying if you kept it, if you let the establishments that exist today go to six, it'll be 126. That's it.
Yeah, perfect. So cap it at 10 VGEs, which have a maximum of six per. And then whatever the other total is.
We have 11.
11 establishments that have VGTs, we're gonna cap that at those 11 and they can have a maximum of six.
Tony, the reason we get to the other number, if you just look at that chart, you get to a lower number. But if then you look at the the additional narrative on the top of page seven where we talk about here, all right, here are some other things that they're authorized. You've already permitted them, although they're not installed. So we counted those in total. That's how you got to that.
Yeah, thank you.
I might be off one or two, but 10.
So clarity again.
Yeah.
10 VGEs, we have that. We can cap it at that. And then however many establishments total up, the ones that are promised, the ones that are existing that have VGTs, they can continue to have those and they can maximize, maximum.
Up to whatever that is.
Six at those and that's it.
Got it.
That's how we're kept.
Got it. That's clean.
Yes, Alderman Morris.
So to clarify what you're saying, Twin Tavern, for example, does that go with the new people who buy it? Or does that go to whomever chooses to get VGTs next?
To keep it simple, because otherwise we're talking about attrition, right? To keep it simple, it would be tied to the building. But I I don't think we want to keep that simple. So a business that went defunct, a business that is no longer in business essentially, so that's O'Leary's, that's Twins, those are gone.
But I think they just said they counted those in the numbers.
No, I think, Bill? City Manager?
They're like, well, here's the problem. They're licensed to, that's what I thought, they're licensed to the licensee, not the property, unlike some other things that we do. So you could find another location, even though it it wasn't working out at this location, you move it with the council permission to whatever blocks away. So it goes out with the people who say they fail or decide, we're done with this. They can't sell it at that anymore because the next applicant will not be them.
Right.
Have have they maintained their licensing? Have they paid their fees? Are they current with their license? And if they're not, then it's off the books.
Yeah, yeah, that would be, they decided to go out of business or there was foreclosed or whatever the purpose was.
So if the owner of O'Leary's opened up another restaurant here in town and wanted to apply for that license, would that have to come before council since it has gone defunct? Okay.
Yeah, it's a new license.
So we're back to the original where council's gonna approve in the future whether they allow a license or not to that individual that had it prior.
Well, you can make it that 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 person who Mr. Smith, Mrs. Smith, decided, O'Leary's is done now, but they've been in good standing and they want to go five blocks away and say, no, we're done. I'm sorry. You're you're done.
So if I if I hear everything correctly, what I think we're gonna do is we'll draft an ordinance that has this, in effect, a moratorium on the existing video gaming. And we'll also draft a draft one that speaks to the attrition recommendation. And then we can either bring this back for, you know, a consideration again for everybody's enjoyment.
You had it real clean there for about 10 seconds.
We did.
Here's what I heard and this is what I would propose.
Do you want to clarify?
Yes, okay, please.
Here's what I would say and and going to what Greg was saying. So we have a list here. There are some establishments with supplemental VGTs that are listed at the bottom of page five. And then there are some in the narrative that follows. You could, there might be five, there might be four, but it's gonna be a maximum of six. So what I heard was, we've got 10 establishments that are video gaming establishments. That's what they are. And they can have up to six each. So that's 60, boom. And you can go up to six on this list or any others that are authorized, just not for whatever reason, whatever. And then we're done. That's it. No new, that's it. And what will happen is because they're licensed to individuals, eventually it will attrition. It won't be overnight, but it will attrition. So it's slower, but we don't get into that conflict with, uh, sorry, buddy, you know, you want an extra one. No, you can't have it when the guy next door's got one and going for another one, you know. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So you're you're, the only reason you're not capped at 137, Mayor, is that some, there are some fours and fives here.
I get it. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
We'll get up to 145 or something.
My question, then, let's go back a little bit where we use Twins as the, well, O'Leary's is the example. So O'Leary's, they want to sell. The owners want to sell. If it's tied to the ownership and they're they're gonna sell and we're saying we're not gonna give it to the next owners, that would lower the value of the business.
And that's exactly where Twins is.
Then then what you need to do is to tie it to the property.
Yeah.
But but then we'd have to redo all of the licenses.
If you don't attrition it, then you're fine. That's what you're.
So if it's, so let's go, you just said it's tied to.
The individual, the people, bodies.
So do they, was that something that they knew when they got this, that it was?
Going to be attrition.
Did they, is the assumption that it's an asset that they can sell?
It's not transferable. You have to, you have to issue the license, just like a liquor license is not transferable. Although in practice, people think, hey, I've got this. It's it's a gold mine. I'm tired of standing behind a bar, so I'm gonna sell it to the new family. They don't sell the license, even though in the conversation, the informal, private conversation, this will be no, no problem. If you spell it out, then it is a problem. If you just say, no more for that location, no more for that. If you say no more for that person, then we're allowing another group of people to come in. You see what I mean? But the I think the attrition will happen. It'll just take more time.
I'm just trying to figure out how to handle these. We're basically at three. It's it's Twins and it's that other one that applied and didn't.
Well, it's everything going forward. It's Hometown. Hometown, Tom wants to sell. He wants to sell his bar, let's say. I'm using this as an example. Tom doesn't want to sell, but using an example. Tom can sell his bar, but he can't sell his VGTs.
Right.
So that would devalue the value of Hometown.
Right.
And Tom may be planning on, I shouldn't use his name, but it's all hypothetical here. Yeah, don't put that in the paper, the who and stuff, please. But, uh, yeah, this is.
Yeah, it, yeah.
This is gonna be tobacco and liquor too.
I just, I I think I don't agree with the attrition part. I think that the ones that exist should continue to exist and I think that people should be able to sell their terminals to the next buyer. And I'm not saying sell their licenses because they don't have the licenses. And yes, we still have to approve the license because we have to approve both the liquor license and the and the the license, the gaming license. But I don't, I think that that's really mean. I think it's really mean to tell them they can't sell them.
Maybe you can give yourself credit for this. We don't have, they're not allowed in the food fuel, which you can find, as somebody said earlier, you can find, they're not allowed in gas stations. Our community did not go down that road and I recommend that we not go down that road. That's the cleanest piece right there.
Yeah.
And and whatever else will come along, that's not part of these categories. So what what we have now is not changing much. This hasn't changed for a long time. So what we don't hear is is a lot of, I know it's, I know in conversation we hear, I don't like these. And in respect to Alderman Faver's point. don't like these, in respect to Alderman Favors' point, and a lot of people feel that way, but there isn't a groundswell to change the law. Actually, it's the other side. There are more people coming in every week, every month, and Ms. Scott is at the point of all that, and as we, as I noted here in the background, can I have one of these for this? And we have some people who have, already have a, say, a video gaming license, who are thinking, hey, I'd like to do, I'd like to do whatever now, a bar or something, and I want, how many, can I get six of those? I'm ready to move to another site, or a liquor store, I'm gonna move, I can't do it in a liquor store, but I want to move over here and have whatever. So I think we, you've established, and the mayor and I, just a year ago, I thought, sat in with one of, as far as Northern Illinois is concerned, the largest operator of terminals, and we just said, no, we're not gonna budget, the council has no taste for budgeting on where we are, we're gonna put them in gas stations and all the rest. So that stopped, for the most part, not entirely.
So, I had an idea. The, the six in an establishment, so let's say Elks, if Elks sold, that individual owns that license for up to six, and that individual could sell that license for up to six, he couldn't sell two, two, and two, let's say, right? It's one license, is that correct?
He can't sell the license technically.
Sorry, sorry, okay, yeah, sorry.
But he can give assurance, that barring anything else, if you get a condition, if you get a state license, then you can, the city council said you can have it.
So let's look at it as, we have, we have ten VGEs, and we have X amount of locations that we allow for VGTs. So we're gonna cap it at X amount of locations that have VGTs in our community.
I like that.
Okay? With me? If someone lets their V, their location expire, they're not renewing it, it's gone. But if someone, if Twins wants to renew it every single year, pay the fees of the city of DeKalb, he's gonna maintain that asset, that ultimately, someone else could come in the community, say, I want to open up Twins with video gaming licensing, and he'd say, no problem, I'm gonna let mine go, and you'll be able to get that license. They weren't listening.
Yeah, the easiest way to explain this, and I know we've gone over, is, so there's ten current VGE licenses, right? Let's say somebody gets out of the VGE business, are you talking about accessories? We can do the same.
I'm talking about the accessories.
Okay, so let's talk about the accessories. There are eleven current ones, there are two pending, okay? Let's, let's say somebody gets out of that game of wanting to run that business, or wanting to run the, you know, the establishment, there would still be a license, they, they wouldn't have that license out, you know, anymore, right? But there is the theoretical, there is that eleventh license that is still there, that somebody else could then come and apply for. But if you went the attrition route, then it would go down to ten, and that second, that new business couldn't get the new license, right? That is, that is an option that you could do or not do, right?
But, but that is, to the economics of it, that's the retirement, right? That we're gonna sell it, because we got value, and without that, maybe we can't sell it as, you know, that's a family involved, probably, in our community, it might be a corporation and others, but it's usually a family that's involved, just.
It isn't, it isn't, because I own a bar, pre-gaming terminals, I own a bar in DeKalb, the way the liquor license was, it was that way, that I had the liquor license, it went with my bar. But if I sell, if I sell you my bar, you're not guaranteed to get a liquor license, you may not, the next person may not get a liquor license.
Just to correct this one point, everybody thought that they were, that they were, if they had the liquor license at Tony's Bar and Grill, that it went with the next person.
It's not transferable.
But it wasn't. It never happened.
It's not transferable, and that's not, we're not taking something away from someone, it's, the state has set up the rules, it's not a transferable license. You have to start at square number one, if you buy somebody else's business. It may look like a no-brainer, but you still have to go through all the steps from step number one. We're not taking anything away from anyone. Someone's built a business, and they have established themselves maybe as the best gaming facility in DeKalb, but it's not transferable.
Correct.
There's no disagreement on that.
I don't know if we're, I don't know if we're making progress here. So I, I think, I think what could happen is, maybe an older person, myself, city manager, city attorney, we could sit down, we could work through this a little bit more, hash it out before we bring it before council, because in this environment, with eight of us, talking to multiple people, I don't think we're ever gonna get to a conclusion at this point, we've been talking about this for forty-five minutes now. So my recommendation would be table it, if that's okay, city manager?
Yes.
Okay. Table it. I would recommend maybe working with Alderman Perkins, since he's got firsthand experience with the Elks Club, and needing one more VTE, and understands the business side of this, and we work with you guys to bring something before council as a consideration in the future. How does that, Alderman Verbic?
Doesn't the market determine how many gaming terminals are in demand by those we serve? In other words, gosh, how to best explain this? If it becomes too watered down, there's too many gaming terminals, then it gets slower at one business that not, may not be able to attract that gaming terminal customer as much as this other business that attracts the gaming terminal customer. So are we trying to solve something here that really the market in and of itself can solve on its own? Just putting it out there.
I stand by my earlier comment.
Okay, we'll set up a meeting.
Okay. All right, let's do that.
Thank you.
Thanks for bearing with us, everyone, but this is the beauty about conducting business in public. Absolutely. It was a great conversation, I should have called it a little bit earlier. All right, moving on to agenda item K, resolutions. Resolution two zero two-three dash zero one-eight, approving a retail tobacco store license for Dena Five Incorporated DBA Smokers Choice, eleven eighty West Lincoln Highway. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second, moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams, city manager.
And I know we're talking about maybe bringing back the tobacco subject, but in this case, the council's already given, what should I say, a soft approval, because back in November, you may recall, first meeting in November, you authorized a special use on the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission for this very use at a, at that location. So now they're back with the ability to apply for the license, and we recommend your approval. So it was a two-step, and I think it would be unfair not to proceed with that original understanding.
Counsel, questions, comments? Alderman Verbic?
Same thing, so if we've got smoke shops coming before us about the same discussion, doesn't the market determine the number of smoke shops and how successful they are in this land of competition? Yes or no? So, that's, that's my main question, and all the best in Ward Six to this business.
And you are absolutely right on that, the market can determine it, but we as a council can also determine the makeup and look and feel of our community, and that's where we can weigh in on which businesses do we see. It's no different than, this is America, anyone can live where they want. We are a community, a belonging community, everyone belongs in the city of DeKalb, but there are behaviors that do not belong in the city of DeKalb. If you are here to cause harm, you do not need to be here, at all, we don't tolerate it. So this is kind of carrying over, and I don't mean to get that strong on this, but this kind of carries over into that same thing, where we can decide, what is the look and feel that we want on certain things in our community, independent of what the market decides? That's how I feel about our role on this, and that's why we're having the conversation about liquor, tobacco, and everything else. Yep. All right.
The challenge is, is who we serve, though, and yes, we have our own opinion about this, that, or the other thing, but the most important thing to me, same with gaming terminals, I would like to hear more from those I serve. So what is your feeling on gaming terminals? What is your feeling on smoke shops? And any other broader topic the council approaches to try to limit? So, that's all.
Well, in no way, shape, or form am I saying, partially, obviously, we can all sit up here about how we feel, but what I'm hearing from people, over and over and over again, is I do not want to go into a gas station and see video, I do not want to go here, I want to go out to dinner, and I don't want to see these things. So I am listening to constituents as well. I'm sure we're gonna get both sides, and it's a city of forty thousand, but it's not isolated to, I'm sitting up here thinking about what I feel. Yes, Alderman Verbic.
Going off the rails.
Well, yeah.
So, no, I'll just, to just, I would, right, I agree in the capital market, I will tell you, there's not a single constituent, I have not heard from a single person in the city of DeKalb who said, I need another gaming terminal closer to my house, because it's just too far to walk to the Elks Club, or, I've never heard anybody ask for another gaming terminal in DeKalb. I have had people ask for, and we have made the changes to our liquor license. So many people have said, I would love to go out to pick a restaurant in downtown DeKalb, and either bring in a bottle of wine, or I would love to just get a beer, or a bottle of wine while I'm there, a glass of wine. And so we've modified our liquor license to allow for that, to serve the residents of our community, so, that's all I'll say.
All right. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
This is on Smokers Choice.
Where are we?
Yes, this is approving the retail tobacco store license for Dena Five Incorporated DBA Smokers Choice.
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faver?
Welcome to DeKalb, yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution two zero two-three dash zero one-eight passes. Thanks for bearing with us as we talk through this, we're just trying to do what we think is in the best interest of the city, so, yeah, but, good luck on everything, excited to have you as part of the community. You bet.
Thank you.
All right, we're cooking now. All right, resolution two zero two-three dash zero one-nine, authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding and approving the purchase of water meters and radio transmitters from Badger Meter Incorporated and Core in Maine, in an amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Morris, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution would authorize us to spend up to eighty thousand dollars this fiscal year for the replacement of meters that need to be replaced, that failed after many years of use. As you know, we've been using a certain kind of meter for a while now, we, it's integrated in our system, and also, the way that our meters and our radio devices work together has been very, much more than satisfactory, has been very, very helpful. The residents who have them agree, and so we're recommending that we waive, that the council waived competitive bidding on this, and we proceed with the Badger meters, and Core in Maine produces those devices that are used primarily for larger meters, and so we did this last year, and the previous year, and the previous year, and the previous year, so we need to, I think, stick with this, what's working, and recommend your approval.
Counsel, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution two zero two-three dash zero one-nine passes. Number three, resolution two zero two-three dash zero two-zero, approving a limited solar farm lease for Northern Tier Farm Partnership. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Faver, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in late December, well, mid-December of twenty-one, the council approved an agreement with DeKalb Taylor Solar, for the forty-eight acres that are on our DeKalb Taylor Airport site, for eventual installation of a solar farm. The total development period, due diligence period, extends through December thirty-first of this year. Doesn't look like this farm is gonna get started during the growing season, and so what we'd like to do is, using the rates per acre that you recently approved for the other farm acres out in the DeKalb Taylor Airport site, that we allow for the leasing of that to Northern Tier, at the Northern Tier partnership pricing.
Counsel, questions, comments? Alderman Morris?
Is that per acre per month, or per acre per year?
It's per acre per year.
Yeah, per season. Any other comments or questions? Whoever caught that, that's a great idea. Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution two zero two-three dash zero two-zero passes. Number four, resolution two zero two-three dash zero two-one, approving the transportation improvement program for federal fiscal years twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight at the DeKalb Taylor Municipal Airport. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman Perkins, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I think going back to the early nineties, late eighties, when the, a previous council determined that we ought to expand the airport, and add another runway, and do a lot of other things, the city has been a beneficiary of some roughly fifty million dollars from federal sources, and they're typically funneled through the Department of Transportation's Division of Aeronautics. And every year, that, that money just, we don't just get a check stroke by the federal government, we have to prove that we actually have good uses for the money, and every year we come up with an annual plan for how that money might be used, and we have to qualify projects before Division of Aeronautics, and then that one-year plan has to be part of a five-year plan, a larger plan. We're still working through the last, or the current five-year plan, but our annual plan had, was proposed to the Division of Aeronautics last late October, this, and has now been approved by them, but it has to be approved by you. What's in that plan includes some more paving, a lot of the preference from the federal to the state level is to give money that otherwise wouldn't be available, capital dollars that could be used for the most expensive type of improvements. We do, however, have one improvement we're gonna be doing this year, which is to replace fencing to the tune of a million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that we talked about recently at this, at this meeting, that was delivered by Congresswoman Underwood, and that's very welcome. There is gonna be a local share for that, but we can come up with that local share this year. What's in the tip for the next year is probably not going to be due until, the improvements probably won't be done until two thousand twenty-four, and maybe the actual spending won't be done until two thousand twenty-five, but there will be a local share, which I've identified, for the runway resurfacing that would probably be started sometime in two thousand twenty-four. That'll be about a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, that's locked into this tip that's before you tonight, and so as you approve this, as we look forward, about a year from now, that budget is gonna have to have a local share in it, or we could run the risk of not getting those federal dollars, which are enormous. So I recommend, in behalf of our DeKalb Taylor Airport staff, and Andy Rye, who's got the general purview over, over the airport, your approval of this particular resolution.
Counsel? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution two zero two-three dash zero two-one passes. Moving on to agenda item L, ordinances, second reading, we have none, and ordinances, agenda item M, ordinances, first reading, number one, ordinance two zero two-three dash zero one-zero, approving a special use permit for Cannabis Business Establishment Cannabis Dispensary at three oh five East Locust Street, Candid Spirit Two LLC. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. We do have a public speaking forum, Dwayne Brown, if you want to come up. And Dwayne, just as a reminder, you have a maximum of three minutes for your comments.
Dwayne Brown, fourth ward. After several cannabis dispensaries have been approved by the city council in the past, only to be denied a license by the state, we now have one with a license in hand, wanting to open. This is wonderful news for the medical cannabis users to alleviate their pain and recreational use. users to enjoy the freedom of legal cannabis. Allowing a cannabis dispensary to move in increases tax revenue, local economic development, and medical and recreational cannabis for those who need it and want it. A new study from Rutgers University shows a positive correlation between cannabis-related businesses and home prices in municipalities. The study found that the average home sale price increases one point six percent in municipalities that allowed cannabis-related businesses. The increase for the average property is six thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars. Illinois collected four hundred and forty-five million dollars from one point five billion in cannabis sales in two thousand twenty-two. Illinois generated almost one hundred million more in tax revenue from cannabis than from alcohol. Last year, Illinois officials awarded forty-five million in grants funded by cannabis tax dollars in addition to providing community reinvestment funding. The governor has processed five hundred thousand expunchements and pardons for people with low-level cannabis convictions. Greed Thumb Industries of Chicago is the largest cannabis retailer in the U.S. This highly anticipated dispensary will not only fulfill the needs of the city, but will also generate two hundred thousand dollars a year in tax revenue and create ten full-time jobs. We have waited seven years, this, this city, since the passage, the legalization of it in the state, only to be denied by the state. We now have the opportunity to open one for the long-suffering medical users and the anticipated recreational users that want it. I, I hope the council approves this, thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. All right, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Brown actually mirrored my comments from the staff level. I, I wanna say, there are people in this audience tonight, including members of the council, that are very eager to consider this tonight, and there are two people in the audience who have been most patient, Nakia McAdoo and Crystal Anderson, who are part of this firm, the petitioner Candid Spirit, and thank you for, for being here tonight, and they may have something they wish to say, if you'd like to hear from them. But very quickly, they have been issued a conditional license by the property Illinois Department for our region. They are, they do not currently have any other dispensary licenses, but they do have two other types of licenses, the craft grower license and then the adult-use transporter license. They are persons who have been involved in, in, in the medical professions as licensed nurses for many, many years, and collectively over sixty years, in their ownership group. They were initially most interested in the medical cannabis portions of this, but obviously this, it comes with the general dispensing opportunity. They have identified a spot in our downtown area, and because it's in the downtown area, they are required to have a special use permit, hence this action before you tonight. The building is the, what was once known as the DeKalb Credit Union Building, and more recently, the Vibrant Credit Union Building, it's been vacant for a while. It's at North Third and Locust Street. There are advantages in, in the location, but also in the building. It's a solid building, it's a brick facade building. There are square feet in here that allows them to not only provide the dispensary, but some additional space for growth inside. They have, which is unusual in the downtown area, space for some off-street parking, although it's not required, there is not a parking requirement in the central, central business district. They're also interested in putting in a handicap, new handicap parking space, and also, working with an architect, have designed along the Locust Street side, a long ramp that would provide more accessible access for persons who may have mobility problems. The Planning and Zoning Commission looked at this, there are many other details here, but I've identified those in the background. The Planning and Zoning Commission looked at this last week, and by a vote of three to one, recommended your approval. We recommend your, the approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation.
Council, questions? Yes, Alderman Verber.
It mentioned in the backup, the need for TIF. Is that a requirement?
No.
Or is that just a?
Not a requirement, because, but there is an opportunity, the staff actually offered that, it wasn't something that they were looking for, but we just said, you know, you should know, there is an AIP program that does provide some assistance for accessibility, whether it's widening an entry door, a bathroom, or, or in this case, a ramp, which, which will be substantial to get the right grade and to bring it to the opening that's in the wall from, from a logical starting point. So they're welcome to, to take advantage of that, and if they do, we'll bring it back before you, it's not a given.
Great, thank you.
Others? Yes, Alderman McAdams.
That seems appropriate to quote the great old dead here. What a long, strange trip it's been for DeKalb, trying to get a dispensary. I am planning to vote yes. I know the fifth ward welcomes you, and we're looking forward to, to a long, prosperous relationship.
Other questions, comments? I do have a question about signage. I didn't see any signage in the background, unless I missed it.
Some signage is allowed in the central business district, and you have to conform to those requirements.
I ask, 'cause I had someone reach out to me today, who's not for having a dispensary, but understands that most likely it's gonna move forward, who didn't want a ten-foot pot leaf with laser beams coming off of it.
Petitioners may want to address that, as they did before the plane.
Yeah, if you guys, you gotta come up to the podium if you could, that would be great.
Good evening, I'm Nakia McAdoo. With regard to signage, we are bound by the state and their regulations and their requirements to make sure that the signage is appropriate and does not in any way show marijuana leaves, cannabis leaves, or any cannabis paraphernalia on the outside signage. So we have a state regulation that we have to adhere to, as well as whatever local regulations that are required by the local government.
If you can come up to the, you gotta come up to the microphone. We actually stream these live and record them, so for posterity, people at home need to be able to hear you.
I'm Crystal Anderson, and also, I don't know if you guys know, but the name of the establishment, establishment will be Exaleaf, and so there will be a sign that says Exaleaf, and like she said, it'll be tastefully done. Nothing, no fanfare or anything like that to show that this is like, you know, Ettraface dispensary.
I have no doubt.
Just so the council knows, the state law that regulates signage for cannabis dispensaries is a condition of the special use as well?
And that has been received.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Well, it has been a long time, been talking about this, so I couldn't be more excited about having you all come to our community, start a new business, and I just wish you absolutely all the best of luck, but I have a feeling you're gonna just crush it, so. Welcome to DeKalb, and thanks again for investing in our community. Last chance for questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Ordinance two zero two three dash zero one zero passes on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second reading?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Morris, Alderwoman Morris, and seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any other questions or comments on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two three dash zero one zero. It is official.
Woo-hoo! Thank you.
Yes.
Any idea when you're gonna open?
Yeah.
Well, the pressure has been put on by Dan to be opened by the Corn Fest.
So the response to the question was, hopefully opened by Corn Fest. Awesome, all right.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to number two, ordinance two zero two three dash zero one one, amending chapter twenty-three Unified Development Ordinance, Article twelve, Off-Street Parking, Loading, and Storage Requirements. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderwoman Larson, City Manager.
Thank you. Credit to our planning director, Dan Olson, for what you're going to see tonight, what you've read through, what we hope you will take action on tonight. Back when the comprehensive plan was approved by the council, the city staff had mentioned that there would be some things that were part of to-do lists that had been recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the council embraced that as well, and this was one of them. None of these revisions make the parking requirements more restrictive, all of them add a little bit of flexibility, based on the experience we've had in recent years, both on the residential side, the commercial side, and the details are laid out at some length in your background, just to highlight a few things. We do have, in some parts of our town, the Safe Streets Initiative, as you know, which is in place and needs to remain in place in many of those parts of town. What we've found over the years, there are some, there are some reumy houses, there's some fraternity houses and so forth, that had small lots to begin with, relied on on-street parking for guests overnight, and now can't do that, so, except with having to find out, you know, can I call Police Department? Police Department's always been, been receptive, but in a number of cases. But still, there's that piece, so there are some places that aren't using all their, their spots, but there has never been an allowance for people to, in good faith, the market leased some space from adjacent property owners, so now you can do that on the residential side, if this is approved. In some cases, setbacks pertaining to stormwater runoff, the very expensive curbing of all of the parking areas and directing all the runoff into drains in the middle of the lots that take us to, to storm facilities that eventually get to a creek or a river. That's all very good, but when, as an example, the church that was approved on North Handy Glidden Road is surrounded by acres of, of grassland that, at least currently, that can be used for settling stormwater runoff, and so the option, with the approval or the review of the city engineer is there to discuss alternatives to the more expensive route, which maybe in some cases is necessary, because it's a surrounded lot, and it's, they're all paved hard surfaces. So it's just practical in this case. Also, there are some landscape requirements which are kinda cookie cutter, like every so many feet in a large parking lot, you have to have a raised median with some, some trees and some bushes, and usually what you find, because we're in a salt-rich environment, six months out of the year, is that that stuff doesn't last, even the species are supposed to be hardy and resistant, and then you see, you sort of put lava rock in, or they, they try to grow grass there, and then some, some poor guy has to go around and lift their mower up and make one pass, and then go to the next one, ten spaces away. What we try to do is, is to keep the same, to keep landscape standards, but to allow for, for creative and flexible, like around, oftentimes, you have more trees in the parking lot than you do around the parking lot, and so now we allow for some creativity to add not only a better appearance, but also the, the green that is needed for, for environmental reasons. And on, so it's like that, that also, we found on the residential side, the space, the number of spaces per multifamily development, one and a half spaces for the efficiency in the one-bedroom, and then two and a half for the three-bedroom, three and a half for, fractionally, we have recommended a slight change in that, because we're finding out from many of the units built by Pappas Development and others here in recent years, there's, there are spaces, very expensive spaces that have been built without users, so we've reduced it fractionally from, say, one and a half to one point three three, from two and a half to two point three three, three and a half to three point three three. And it doesn't sound like much with, if you just have five spaces, but if you have fifty spaces, that makes a difference, and it, and it does help overall with maintenance and so forth. So we're just trying to be flexible, to recognize that we don't have all the answers, and as people's tastes change, and as the way people arrive and leave from some of these facilities changes, we ought to be able to adapt to it, that's what we're doing here.
Council? Yes, Alderman Favor.
No, I would just think, just wanna thank Dan and, and the city staff for working on that, 'cause that is, that was a big one, and we've received many requests for variances on the, on the parking for apartment buildings and things like that, and it, it's a waste of space if nobody's gonna use those, so I, I mean, it's excellent that we try to remain current and change with the times and keep up to date, so thank you very much.
You remember when we brought in Raising Cane's, and I was worried that we're, well, we're gonna lose a national retailer, because they, they had a model that, you know, how many hundreds of them are around the country, and they know, since it's mostly a drive-thru type of restaurant, how many people are likely to end up inside, sitting down and eating their, their menu? And we eventually had to come to you for a variance, that was one example, and usually councils think, well, oh, a variance, you know, they might do that, but if we had to, and we've had to do that repeatedly, repeatedly, so this, as you say, will hopefully address some of that.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? No, great. Thanks, Dan, and staff for going through that, a lot of i's dotted and t's crossed, and just cleaning up stuff, so that's fantastic. Hearing, no other questions or comments, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Ordinance two zero two three dash zero one one passes on first reading. Take a motion to waive second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Second reading was waived for ordinance two zero two three dash zero one one. All right, moving on to agenda item N, Reports and Communications. Alderman McAdams, you wanna kick us off?
No report.
Alderman Favor?
No report.
Alderman Verbic?
The other dispensary in DeKalb that has the state license is New Era, that will be located in the Junction Shopping Center. Their architects have been in and are getting ready to start the build-out, once it's approved from the state, so, again, very anticipated business in the sixth ward, and I think it's great that, again, the people of DeKalb that have definitely demanded this service and this product will have options.
Awesome. Alderman Perkins?
No report.
Alderman Larson?
Just how I'm amazed every time I come to these meetings, the amount of effort and energy and care and commitment that all the different departments of the city, I mean, it makes this sitting up here so easy, for everything you guys do for us. Thank you.
Alderman Morris?
I do have a report. Today, I met with Birth to Five Illinois, the DeKalb branch of it, and actually, it's kinda complicated and abstract what they're doing, so they actually wrote me a blurb, so I could be very clear about it. Okay, so Birth to Five Illinois is a department of the nonprofit organization INCRA, which stands for Illinois Network of Childcare Resource and Referral Agencies, and they're funded through grants from the Illinois State Board of Education and Illinois Department of Human Services. They've been tasked with completing a needs assessment called a regional scan for each of the thirty-nine regions of Illinois, Regional Office of Education-type regions, which cover the state, state in an effort to improve the early childhood education and care system. This scan will help inform policy and funding decisions at the state level, and it'll be completed this spring and broadcast widely over the summer. So in meeting with a couple of the leaders of that organization, or that task force sort of, it was just really cool to learn about what they're doing, but there are some action items related to it for the community, people can join, you know, so I would look up the Facebook page for this Birth to Five group and group, and they're looking for stories about your experiences with childcare issues. They're looking for think-tank type people to help solve these problems. And one of the groups I suggested that they connect with more is, you know, DCEDC and business people and trying to, because that's one sector that's not really getting super involved in the childcare element yet, that I've seen. So please look them up on Facebook, and know that there is a group really focusing on how do we solve this childcare shortage that is happening in Illinois.
Alderman Smith?
No report.
For me, I was on the WLWK radio show again, which is always a hoot. I have fun with TD Ryan out there, but it's great just to share with the residents or their listeners, who a lot of them are residents of the city of DeKalb, on what's going on. Just another way to keep people in the know. I also, I can't remember if this is right before the last council meeting, but was with Congresswoman Underwood when she came to award the airport's 1.164 million dollars?
125.
125 million dollars. So that was great. And Congresswoman Underwood continues to be just a, an advocate and a fighter for dollars for our community, which is wonderful. Also met with Representative Kiker to talk about a few issues regarding economic development, and how our state legislature can help with that. Also met with Representative Yednok when he was in town. He's actually looking for office space here, which is great. So Representative Yednok, Congresswoman Underwood, and I think is Senator, State Senator Sue Resin also looking for an office here? So three, well, we got US, and we got two state, looking to establish a presence here in the city of DeKalb, which is great. So I made sure to let them know that we expect holler every time they're up, so we can bend their ear a little bit, navigate for the city of DeKalb. Also, Bill and I had our monthly meeting with NIU's leadership team, which was always good, just collaborating with NIU. I can't say enough about how the relationship with NIU, I think, continues to grow, which is awesome. Was at the Chamber Annual Dinner, which was fantastic. Pappas Development was inducted into the Chamber Hall of Fame. Byers Brewery was Business of the Year, and Casa was Nonprofit of the Year, which was really cool. It was a great event, and especially Casa getting the recognition that they deserve, and everything that they do advocating for our youth is phenomenal. Bill and I also met with a developer in town, looking to do potential residential development, just wanted to work through that with us. So it was great to sit down, and kept hearing the comment about business-friendly in the city of DeKalb, which is wonderful. We just got to keep that up. And then lastly, I met with an individual, Matthew Beamsley, had breakfast with him, and it was great just sitting down with someone and getting their perspective, especially around fireworks and the Fourth of July, and how can we make that more accessible to more people? Basically, how can we have a venue that more of our community can show up and enjoy the Fourth of July, as well as make it an even bigger, better show? So that was a lot of fun. So staying busy, for sure. How about you, City Manager, or anything?
No report.
All right. So you don't want to talk about moratoriums, or? Okay, all right. Moving on to...
Can't wait for the tobacco conversation.
Agenda item O, executive sessions, we have none, which leads us to P, adjournment. I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Faber. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, same sign. We are adjourned.